The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 3:30 a.m. Today's Board of Trustees' meeting is being transmitted via live stream from the district's website, www.collogeofthedesert.edu. President Kinnaman, will you conduct the roll call?
Student trustee Garcia.
Aye, here, President.
Trustee Stefan.
Present.
Trustee Perez.
Present.
Trustee Wilson.
Present.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Present.
Trustee Yant.
Present. Trustee Perez, would you lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Sure. If everybody would please stand, place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Perez. Pursuant to government code section 54954.2b2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by two-thirds of the board, less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action, that the need for action to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted is specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda from March 20, 2020?
No, none.
Hearing none, the agenda stands confirmed as presented. Trustees, as we move through the meeting agenda today, I would like to ask that you please identify yourself speaking, and please, in some way, indicate that you have concluded speaking with your comments, so that you can come in and conduct the meeting without interruption and without speaking over one another. And I appreciate your cooperation under this unique circumstance. Minutes, are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of February 7, 2020? Hearing the minutes, they stand approved as presented. In accordance with executive order N-2520 and guidance from the California Department of Public Health, remote public participation is allowed and can be accepted by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu and read into the record during regular public comment. Joya, have we received any emails?
We have not received any public comment requests.
Any public updates from President Kinnaman?
Thank you, Chair Yant. I did have an update on the coronavirus that I would like to read into the record. The health and safety of students, faculty, and staff continues to be the college's top priority. On Friday, March 13, the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees unanimously adopted a state of emergency proclamation which provides authority to the superintendent present or designated to take any and all actions necessary to ensure the continuation of education while protecting the health and safety of the students and staff at College of the Desert. Riverside County Public Health Department issued a mandate on March 17 closing all community colleges, preschools, K-12, public, private, and charter schools and universities in the county through April 30, 2020. Consistent with this guidance, all College of the Desert facilities were closed and only essential staff were allowed on campus. College leadership has worked throughout this past week to keep these numbers at a minimum and to rotate or shift personnel who are required for essential functions. Supervisors were flexible with essential assignments to ensure that anyone who felt they could not come to campus for appropriate reasons were not required to do so. Effective today, we will be shifting to ensure that the only staff on campus are security personnel. During the closure, faculty and staff are working remotely to move classroom courses online. This process will be complete no later than March 30. Many classes have already transitioned online and are continuing on schedule. Training is being provided for all faculties so they can teach online. We have been very pleased with the response to the training and, as of this morning, have trained over 300 faculty members and transitioned almost 100% of credit classes to fully online, including all science labs. The focus is now to complete transition of dual enrollment and non-credit courses. The chancellor's office is being as flexible as possible and responsive to the needs of our students. We will continue to work closely with them as necessary. I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for their leadership during this time, and I know you join me in thanking our entire campus community, faculty, staff, and students for their patience and understanding. I am not going to try and name the people who have stepped up because truly it has been every single person who has asked to assist. It is during times like these when we all come together as a family and we prove we are truly COD proud. Thank you for your public update.
And we certainly want to echo thanks to everyone that's been involved in making all this possible for our students. Item 6, reports. Under the circumstances, our standard reporting has been moved online. Written reports that were submitted to the Office of the President will be incorporated in the meeting minute and posted online. They have been shared with the trustees and have been received, and I want to ensure everyone making written reports that the trustees consider these very carefully now and are reading as they may. For anyone who has not sent over a written report, please do so before the end of business today by emailing it to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu. We do have opportunity for board members to report, so we will begin with student trustee Garcia. Thank you. Trustee Perez?
Yes, as you all are aware, there was an executive committee last week, and we went ahead and canceled stepping out for COD. And other than that, I just want to thank all staff, faculty, for all your cooperation through this unprecedented time. You guys are all working very hard, and I appreciate all you guys' efforts. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Perez. Trustee Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, I have been assisting the foundation as well with the recruitment process for the foundation executive director. Want to thank all those involved, the executive team from the college, and foundation board members Bill Chunnawitz and Jane Saltynstall. They have done an outstanding job. We have chosen finalists that have been, names have been given and passed on to President And again, want to thank everyone for coming together. I have to say the last part of those meetings, I think we're a little bit passionate, but I think that shows how much we care about making sure that we get the right person in that position. So many, many thanks for that. Other than that, just requesting a copy of President Kinnaman's public update. If we could have a copy in writing, please. I am getting some emails from the public with regard to College of the Desert, and I'd like to be able to pass on the latest information. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
First and foremost, I want to thank everyone at the College of the Desert, especially our janitors, especially our first responders and our security, keeping our college safe, clean, and accessible. I also want to give a huge, huge round of applause to our IT team who have, and faculty and staff who are working on rolling all our online courses and making it possible for our students to, I'm getting a lot of emails from our students saying that they're already starting their classes and they're, so I really want to give a big shout out to our IT team and our financial aid team, because I've been hearing from my students telling me and my constituents that their anxiety about their financial aid disbursements is a little lowering. So I really want to thank the college financial aid team, because a lot of them, you know, rely on their financial aid disbursements and how smooth that is going, and I'm very, very thankful for that. I also want to give a big thank to the people who give gifts and donations to the College of the Desert according to our board agenda. And also wanted to find out, maybe later at a future agenda item, Chairman, is news just broke this morning that student loans are going to be postponed and interest rates, it was just announced this morning. So I just wanted to know, get an idea how that will be affecting the College of the Desert. Once again, the student loans have been postponed and interest rates for six months, and I just want to get an update on that because I want to know how we're handling that. And this ends my report, this is trustee Mary Jane Sanchez. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Sanchez Fulton. My report is to really acknowledge that everyone at the college has been doing a wonderful job, been so busy, and perhaps they haven't gotten news from other districts. And from what I've been able to determine, what we've been doing has been really superb and really doing a great job. Other districts are not having the smooth transition that we are, and that comes from the work that people have been doing to make this possible. Special thanks to everyone that's made that possible. Let's move to report.
Excuse me, trustee Yant, this is trustee Stefan, I was skipped for report.
I'm sorry. Thank you for calling that up. Forgive me, I didn't have you on my list, I'm sorry, not to report now.
Yes, I would. I just wanted to thank everyone at the college, everyone, because this is what community's about. It's about being there for each other, it's about being there for our students and for the college, and we couldn't do, the college could not function without everyone's cooperation and support. I also wanted to remind everybody to please be kind to themselves and others, stay safe and healthy, please check on family members and friends via phone and email regularly so that people still have that sense of community, because that is what will keep us all going during this time of crises. And hopefully, we're making great strides at conquering this crisis or overcoming it, and that soon we will be able to have some resolution, but in interim, we need to stay together, stay focused, and make sure that we're doing what's best for everyone. And thank you again to everyone at the college. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Stefan. It's difficult to conduct the meeting when I can't see people, so thank you for speaking up.
That's true.
Let's move now to President Kinnaman, and also ask President Kinnaman if he could address trustee Sanchez Fulton's question about student loans.
Yes, that is, just came out, and I'm not familiar specifically on the immediate impacts, but we will look into that and then provide that to you in writing. I have also got some information, I'll share my comments from public updates, but I can share some information with the trustees for each of the areas on campus and what it is that they have been doing, from how we're counseling students online and providing other types of services, and how we are giving play to pay our student workers and college work-study students, and how, what a wonderful job our support staff are doing, and the functions like payroll and other things that are essential, but they're able to do that remotely. And I've got about three pages of information I'll share with you on that that's a little bit more specific with what's taking place. And again, my appreciation of the board for your leadership and the collegiality of the constituents at our college is, I can't commend them enough in what they've been doing and how well they've been working to make sure we transition through this time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We now move to conducting item 7, consent agenda. All consent agenda will be considered for approval by a single vote without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be pulled from the consent agenda to be discussed and to be discussed in the action agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Trustee Stefan.
Who made that motion, please?
This is trustee Mary Jane.
Thank you, the motion was made. Is there a second?
Which everyone didn't make it second.
Who is speaking?
I have Mary Jane motion, and Bonnie Stefan is seconding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Student trustee Garcia, your vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor? Hmm. Aye. Let me stop for a minute. Carlos, do we do a vote, voice vote or a roll call vote?
I was just going to suggest you do a roll call vote.
Thank you. President Kinnaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, student trustee Garcia.
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Was everyone polled?
No.
Yes, I thought so.
Sorry, trustee Stefan.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. There were no items pulled from the consent agenda. There are no items from the trustees. Now move to item 14, human resources. President, reopening, reopen our proposals from the California School Employees Association and its chapter 407 to the Desert Community College District. Do I have a motion to approve the presentation of the initial reopener proposals from the California School Employees Association and its chapter 407 to the Desert Community College District as presented?
So moved, trustee Stefan.
Is there a second?
Second, this is trustee Wilson, I'm done.
Thank you. At the April 18, 2020 Board of Trustees' meeting, there will be a hearing on the California School Employee Association's proposals to the Desert Community College District, and the public will have the opportunity to express itself regarding the proposal in the form of public comments. It is recommended by the district that the Board of Trustees vote to receive the California School Employees Association reopeners proposals. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. President Kinnaman, will you conduct a roll call vote?
Student trustee Garcia?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. 14.02, presentation of the initial reopeners for Desert Community College District, the California School Employees Association, and its chapter 407. Do I have a motion to approve the presentation of the initial reopeners proposal, Community College District, to the California School Employees Association and its chapter 407 as presented?
So moved, trustee Stefan, end.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Trustee Perez, second.
Thank you. At the April 8, 2020 meeting, the Board of Trustees' meeting, there will be a public hearing on the Desert Community College District's proposals to the California Employees Association, and the public will have the opportunity to express itself regarding the proposals in the form of public comments. It is recommended to the district that the Board of Trustees vote to receive the Desert Community College District's reopening proposals. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kinnaman, will you conduct a vote?
Student trustee Garcia?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. Item 14.03, initial reopeners proposal, public hearing and acknowledgement of proposals from the College of the Desert Faculty Association to the Desert Community College District. Do I have a motion to approve the initial reopeners proposals, public hearing and acknowledgement of the proposals from the College of the Desert Faculty Association to the Desert College District as presented?
Trustee Perez, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Stefan, second.
Thank you. This item is conducting a public hearing under the Educational Employment Relations Act regarding negotiation proposals. Today's public hearing is regarding an initial proposal from the College of the Desert's Faculty Association to the Desert Community College District. Following the public hearing, the board will take action to acknowledge College of the Desert's Faculty Association initial proposal. In accordance with government code section 3547, all bargaining proposals are to be presented at a public hearing of a public school employer, and that is the purpose of today's hearing. Since today's hearing pertains to public hearings held prior to the beginning of negotiations, it is not appropriate for nor will members of the Board of Trustees' comment on the negotiation proposal. For public hearing, the Board of Trustees opens the public hearing for the initial proposal for negotiations from the College of the Desert Faculty Association to the Desert Community College District. Speakers who wish to address this item, please email your comments to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu and your remarks incorporated into the meeting minutes. I now close the public hearing. Now we move to take action on the College of the Desert's Faculty Association's initial proposal. It is recommended that the Board of Trustees vote to acknowledge the College of the Desert Faculty Association initial proposal as presented. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, this is trustee Mary Jane.
Is there a second?
Second, trustee Stefan.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. President Kinnaman, will you conduct a vote?
Student trustee Garcia?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges the initial proposal for negotiations from the College of the Desert's Faculty Association to the Desert Community College District. The parties may hereby commence negotiations. Moving to item 15, action item administrative services, item 15.01, budget revisions. Motion to approve the budget revisions as presented. Do we have a comment from Vice President Ramon at this time?
This is just a, thank you, trustee Yant, this is just a small grant that we're bringing in, and the Workforce Accelerator Grant, I believe it's part of the workforce, the Strong Workforce Initiative. Dr. Neri, you know, if there's any other information needed, Dr. Neri can provide that, that's it.
Now that we know what it is.
We need to know, yes.
Before we have the discussion, do I have a motion to approve the budget revisions, and then we can have the discussion.
So moved, Dr. Stefan.
For a second, trustee Wilson, I'm done.
Okay, we have a second? Yes? Was there a second?
Yes, trustee Wilson, I'm done.
Now we can have discussion and questions.
Trustee Yant, this is trustee Mary Jane Sanchez, I've got a question on this, please.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Where does this come from? I'm not hearing, is this from the state of California, is this from the chancellor's office, is this, we need more information on that, thank you, just wanted to know, we have so many of these grants, I want to, if we could get more information from Mr. Ramon, thank you.
Thank you, Ramon, if you're okay, may I answer this question? This is Dr. Neri.
Yes, please.
So, this is funded by the California Workforce Development Board and the Employment Development Department, and they're working with California community colleges to fund projects that will design, develop, and implement projects in order to accelerate employment and reemployment strategies for Californians who need employment. Done.
Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. President Kinnaman, will you conduct a vote?
Student trustee Garcia?
Aye.
Trustee Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Stefan?
Aye.
Trustee Yant?
Aye. Motion carried unanimously. There are no items from instruction, we now move to item 17, study session, item 17.01, California Community College Trustees' Board Elections. Please submit your nominations to the Board Secretary. Board nominations will be tallied and the official ballot will be submitted to the CCCT Election Board Office later than the end of business, April 25. Would anyone care to comment on this?
Yes, yes. Chairman Yant, may I, since I sit on the, currently on the State Board, may I make a comment on that and talk about the importance to my, to the public and to everyone? So, the CCT Board... So the CCT Board, um, from the California League, this represents all the community, the 116 community colleges across California. This in particular is very crucial right now because we have 12 people running and, um, they're nine seats up for the reelection of the board. We have six incumbents running and three vacancies due to the three-term limit. Um, each of our community college, we could only vote for each of one of the nine seats. So only one vote, this is very important, make, be cast for any nominee or write-in candidate. So if anybody wants more information, they can go to the WWCCleague.org about and they have their bios and their backgrounds. So my fellow trustees, um, I hope you really looked at it and I have some recommendations because some of these people that are on our board have worked tirelessly for our veterans and for our underserved communities as well and, um, our rural community colleges like ourselves. So, um, I have my recommendation of the nine candidates and I'm, and I can explain them, you know, in further detail on this vote. It's very critical, this vote, because of the nature now of what's going on throughout our whole community colleges. Thank you so much and this ends my, my comment.
Thank you, trustee Sanchez Fulton. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Finally, an information item. The board still intends to review and discuss the board's self-evaluation instrument at a future meeting, hopefully at a time when events have made it possible for us to have a more, less stressful and open meeting. For future agenda items, I'm asking that you submit future agenda items to the Board Secretary by email and they will be incorporated into the meeting minutes. I want to thank everyone for bearing with me conducting this meeting in this format, but at this time, the closing session, the live streaming portion of the meeting will conclude at this time. Should there be any reportable action from the closed session, I will report it to the Board Secretary and it will then be incorporated into the meeting minutes and posted before the end of business today. With that, we are now moving to closed session at 10:03 and let's give us time to reconfigure and we will start that in five minutes, so that would be about 10:05. All the trustees have information on how to, to access that, uh, that closed session. So thank you all and everyone.
Chairman, Chairman Yant?
Yes?
May we close this meeting, um, just to, to thank our first responder in, in, and everyone and our staff during this time, our grocery clerks and everyone supporting all of us here in the community.
Thank you, you just did it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that note, the meeting is, we are closed-